You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the LaPorte County Commissioners' Meeting of May 18th. For more information on this meeting, you can go to www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone. Oops, we have some. Turn on a mute. One second. Ready? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the LaPorte County Commissioners' Meeting for Wednesday, May 18th. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all due due diligence.
Roll call, Mr. Auditor.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
Commissioner Mathias.
Present.
Commissioner Morzynski.
Present.
All three present.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to consider the agenda for this evening. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
We're supposed to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Next, we have consider approval of the May 4th LaPorte County Commission Meeting minutes.
Motion to approve as presented?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of the May 4th County Commission Meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Next on the agenda, consideration of claims. Mr. Auditor?
Commissioners, we have payroll for the period ending 5/6/22 in the amount of 1,288,875.84, and operating expense claims in the amount of 3,724,821.15.
Is that a motion? Move to approve the claims as presented?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the claims as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Madam President, I'd like to point out, these claims have now been approved by the Board of Commissioners. They are to be paid. Also, I'd like to point out, we have overdue claims in the amount of $37,275.10, stretching back to January, claims that have yet to be paid by the auditor. I'd like to make a motion at this time, do we order the auditor to do his job as instructed by the State Board of Accounts, to pay the overdue claims? That's my motion.
We have a motion on the floor to approve, to order that the commission pay Friedman and Associates $37,275.10, which does not include the May invoices. I'd like a second?
Point of order, Madam President, we can't make that motion. The alleged, and I'm not even sure if that's the right number, but the alleged amount by Commissioner Morzynski has not been advertised, so if we can't order him to pay something that hasn't been advertised or approved by the Board of Commissioners, that's...
Correction, it's not only been advertised, it's been already passed by this board.
That's not true.
Every month. December, January, February, March, April, they have all been...
Commissioner Morzynski, do you actually read the claims packets that come before us every...
Every one of them.
Then you would know that what you're saying is incorrect if you read them. Seriously, yeah.
The claims don't come to the Commissioners until after they complete the process of being audited in the auditor's office for your approval, so...
I've been here a long time, I know what the process is, and I know that we approved these claims to be paid.
No, we didn't.
And then you went through and audited them afterward, and decided what you were going to pay and what you're not going to pay, even though the State Board of Accounts told you, "You are in error, sir, that you were to be paying them, but you've ignored them, and you've ignored this board." These claims need to be paid.
There...
And that's my motion.
I can't pay something.
We're ordering you to do your job and pay the claim.
I can't pay something you have not formally approved at a commission meeting.
So, I will review the document that we had Diane prepare this afternoon. December 21st invoice was submitted for $6,577.50. It was reduced by the auditor by $712, and it was supposed to be paid on 2/18. The next claim was $15,000 on 1/24, another claim for $8,115 on 1/24, and another one that was paid, $5,692. They were approved by this commission on 2/18. Next, on February 22, invoices were submitted, $14,000 was paid on 2/22. We submitted $7,942.50 to the auditor to be paid and approved, and it was held as of 5/17. It has not been paid. March invoices, some were paid, $16,000 was submitted. We also had approved $6,915 on 3/28, and it has been held as of yesterday, which was the 17th. April 2022 invoices submitted was $12,922. All these claims were approved, reviewed, and approved by the commission, and submitted $6,360 on 5/18. They were submitted to be paid on 4/25. So, what Diane was able to compute is that $37,275.10 does not include the May invoices, and these are items that we have reviewed, and you know, there's a lot of misinformation out there about the claims that come to us as a commission. So I brought one to show you. This is the invoice submitted to the LaPorte County Board of Commission. This one is dated 4/15, for services provided by Friedman and Associates from March 16th to April 14th. So, the first charge is on 3/16, and this is the paragraph describing what the work was for that day. The bill for that day was $697.50 for four hours, 4.65 hours, billed at a rate of $150. The next item listed, you can see there's a lot of words here, because it tells you exactly what the bill is for. Review commitment letters, replacement of Bridge 166 and Bridge 94, review induct 2022 NOFA call for Project Narrative, review the appraisals updated on the EMS base and parcel, draft update for Councilman Novak and Jagelski regarding the appraisals. There's conversations that are, many of them are confidential, there's conversations with law enforcement, conversations with the clerk, conversations with other attorneys. So anyway, it goes on and on and on, and I just, I guess I wanted to show this as a visual aid, because I keep reading that we just blankly approve things without any detail. You know, you all, I don't know the commissioners, my fellow commissioners and their personal habits, but I can tell you, I'm a pretty frugal person, and I treat the taxpayers' dollars like they're my own. I'm the one that does rebates, and I do coupons, and I save the bacon drippings, just you never know when you might need them. So I am not going to waste your money, and I'm not going to pay bills without reading them, and looking at them, and seeing them. So, you know, while they're being held up, the State Board of Accounts has been real clear to us that we need to get the bills paid. He's been clear to the auditor, they've had numerous letters back and forth, and so the motion on the floor tonight is to get these bills paid, so, sir.
If I could just clarify one simple factual matter, when you folks sign his bills from your office, Commissioner Haney, you have not signed the last few or several of them, I noticed. They then, so you're approving them as department heads, and then they come to my office, then I examine an audit after my approval, I approved reduced amounts on certain bills, I've been paying, well, I've been paying the liability bills, because as I said to Mr. Freeman, I think the documentation is excellent on those bills, quite frankly. But on the commission bills, when he charges for politics, which he does, or charges to operate illegally as county administrator, I can't pay for that. So, those don't get put on your docket to be approved at a formal commission meeting until they've gone through the auditor's office. So, anything dating back to February that has not been on your docket yet, so you have not approved it formally as a body yet, it hasn't been placed on your docket, that's what Commissioner Haney is referring to.
That was my point earlier, Commissioner Morzynski, that we can't order him to pay something that we as a body have not yet authorized and approved for paying.
Well, how long are we going to let this go on? How long are we going to let this go on of not paying bills that are submitted to the Commissioners? We review every one, I don't know if you do.
Yeah.
But I know Sheila and I, we review every one, and we approve them.
How about this? How about we order our county attorney to submit proper documentation for non-privileged information, the same documentation that any member of the public could ask through Freedom of Information Act request? Why not just order him to provide the documentation, the auditor needs to pay the claims, and then if he provides the documentation and doesn't, we can take that on a step-by-step basis and figure out, just is this something randomly or not? Because this latest bill that I went through, there were a number of things in there that appeared to be very political in nature, and I delineated those out, and I sent them with a copy of the bill to the auditor. You know, the people have a right to know if our county attorney is directing politics in this county and acting in political fashion. The taxpayers should not be paid for things that are blatantly political. It's not right. You know, our county attorney is a county attorney, he's not an administrator, should not be doing administrative functions. I don't want to... As an attorney, I mean, there's a broad purview of what he can do when it comes to some of these specific items. As Commissioner Mathias pointed out, from one of the bills, there's the multi-thousand-dollar bill, there was about $712, I think he pointed out, that wasn't paid out of that one bill, to my knowledge, and you know, the county attorney hasn't provided the documentation for that, which seems to stand out egregious, and you know, as outstanding in my opinion, without some sort of documentation for it. I've reached out in the past for bills from the county attorney, asking for some clarification on some, and he has refused to provide any of that clarification as a department head. How do I sign off on, as Commissioner, as department heads, over our county attorney? How am I supposed to sign off on a bill where our employee is refusing to provide me, the department head, the, you know, any information as to where the work is, just forward it on to an attorney, because he's involved in a litigation now against the auditor? It's bizarre and it's preposterous. I don't understand why we have a contracted, third-party, 1099, you know, employee, basically, or contractor, refusing to provide documentation for his work, and the two of you are just so gung-ho to just pay him blindly. It doesn't make sense. I mean, there's nothing wrong with what's going on, again, privileged information aside, I'm not talking about that, that's a tiny sliver, if at all, for the majority of these that we're seeing. So, why is it so hard to ask the person submitting the bill to submit documentation? I mean, I've operated in a consulting world for years. If I didn't provide documentation to any of my billing, to any of my employers, hospitals, or anything...
This is documentation. This is documentation, and all the other lawyers, most of them don't provide this level of detail, to be honest. But the State Board of Accounts was really clear in a letter that they sent to the auditor, that it is not his role to decide what is administrative, for example. The attorneys all perform their duties based on what they are directed to do. So oftentimes, we direct him to do various things.
I'm sorry, continue, please, I'm sorry.
We direct him to do tasks, and if those appear to the auditor to be administrative, that is not his call. His call, based on what the head of the State Board of Accounts, who has a CPA and a million credentials behind his name, he said, "That is not your call, pay the bills that have been sent to you and passed by this board." So, you know, I have to say, I think that you're, unless we're going to do this with every provider, every vendor, every lawyer, every advisor and consultant, we shouldn't be picking on one provider. I just, I really don't get it. And if you think I'm paying bills because I like Shaw Friedman, that is a bunch of baloney. That's not how we operate in this county.
So, I've actually asked for some of the other additional attorneys' bills that have come across our desk, and all of them don't, because some of them just go directly to department heads, like, you know, for example, the Board of Health, for example, or, you know, the council has their own attorney, so the council's going to get their own delineated list that we're not going to see. But for others, I've asked other attorneys for some clarification, they've gladly provided it to me, and that was it. So, and at least in my case, it's not just limited to, you know, our county slash commission attorney. I do want to circle back to something you said earlier, you said that both yourself and Commissioner Morzynski are directing the county attorney to perform these things. If it's something that falls...
I said the three of us do. You ask him for things as well.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I've never asked him to do anything politically for me, so...
Nor have I.
Nor have I.
Nor have you. So, if that's the case, then what's the problem with providing the documentation for those charges?
Mr. Friedman, would you like to speak?
Certainly, and Mr. Haney, you know, we never build a penny for partisan political work.
That's not true. That's not true.
You're on the border, sir.
And, okay, I understand that...
Excuse me, you don't have the floor, Mr. Auditor.
March 15th.
Mr. Friedman has...
The State Board of Accounts made very clear to this board, the auditor is under an obligation to pay those bills. He said that the head of the State Board of Accounts is all wet, he's all wet, he disagrees with it. That's fine, that's what the separate litigation is for. But, Mr. Haney, we provided detailed billing, it is not, read the letter, I suggest respectfully, read the letter of the State Board of Accounts Chief Examiner, who has said to you that he has counseled this auditor repeatedly about paying those bills. There's only so much the State Board of Accounts can do. They have said this is improper practice to be withholding the bills, they have said we're not required to provide work product that may be privileged or exempt, you've got detailed billing, and it all complies with State Board of Accounts practices, and I got to tell you, sir, we've been county attorneys 26 of the last 37 years, and I have never had either a county commissioner or an auditor ever take exception to our billing. And so, this is a first, that's fine, but I'm telling you, it's not based on direction by the State Board of Accounts, and what Mr. Stabos has done is specifically in explicit violation of what the chief examiner has directed in the bill.
I would say that's your opinion of what that letter says. I don't have the letters here in front of me, but I don't think any of those letters ever told him not to do his due diligence as an auditor, not to perform his auditor function.
They have said it is not the, sir, read the letter again. They have said it is not the auditor's job to question behind, as long as the time is well stated, it is detailed, it is not the auditor's job to go behind that and to question the purpose of a given expenditure.
Hasn't the State Board of Accounts also said specifically that operating as a county administrator, for example, would be outside the purview of a county attorney?
Sir, look at the contract. Look at the contract that has been approved by this board. It authorizes to engage in a variety of policy work on behalf of this body, its advocacy on behalf of the county. We absolutely take exception to any kind of inference that there's been partisan political work that is violative of state law, and honestly, I don't believe that you're attempting to assert that. I can't believe that you would attempt to assert that. The commission is now to the point of ordering that the bills be paid, and I guess you can vote however you vote.
I would love to have that sort of confidence, but with some of the things that I've seen, it raises some red flags for me, and that's why, again, we're taking certain things like, you know, like privileged information, for example, is a very small part of, generally speaking, of what you do, and that is privileged information, it should be kept privileged. I don't have any, and I don't think the auditor would disagree with that either, but when we're talking about the greater scope and things that are outside of that, we've got various letters from the State Board of Accounts. Across all of them, though, there's an underlying theme that the auditor does have the purview to audit the bills and to do his due diligence, and he's attempting to do his due diligence.
Read the March 15th letter, sir. You continue, no, you're wrong.
I wish I had that in front of me here right now.
Let me tell you. The chief administrator for the State Board of Accounts said she spent two hours on the phone with Mr. Stabos, and he still doesn't get it, is what she said in an email that she sent to area legislators. Area legislators were so concerned about this that they contacted the State Board of Accounts over this. The chief administrator, the chief of staff for the State Board of Accounts has said, "I have done what I could to try to counsel Mr. Stabos." The head of the State Board of Accounts has put it in writing both in October of 2021 and March 15th of 2022. They couldn't be clearer, sir, and I know, for whatever reason, you want to take your side on this, and you'll parrot whatever line he's putting forward, but I'm telling you, it does...
Mr. Friedman, that is inappropriate.
Well, you know what?
You work for us, that is inappropriate, and you know it is.
You know what?
Stop.
Mr. Haney, it's inappropriate for you to continue to do this in the face of clear direction from the State Board of Accounts, and you want to be on it.
They also said that 1.5 million dollars in open contract needed to be bidded out, Mr. Friedman.
Excuse me.
Call for the elections.
We have a motion on the floor.
1.5 million dollars in open contract.
Excuse me. I have two more comments to make. For 27 years, Mr. Friedman, you said that you've been a county attorney, how many audit exceptions has your firm had in 27 years?
Not one.
From the State Board of Accounts?
Not one.
Okay, thank you. In addition, I am concerned about, we talk a lot on my left-hand side here, about integrity and corruption and intimidation. I have department heads coming to me and telling me that they are being asked to produce emails and other work product to the auditor to prove claims, and I would say that is intimidation, and that is not okay. If this body approves the claims, we are responsible to the taxpayers to take care of their money, and there's three of us making those decisions. We are careful with the money, we try to make sure that it's being spent well. Calling department heads and trying to get work product is not appropriate. So, we have a motion on the floor, is your motion still standing?
Yeah, the motion is to order the auditor to pay these past due claims.
Thank you.
Can I respectfully clarify one more simple point? I don't want to throw Commissioner Haney under the bus, because goodness knows Mr. Friedman thinks that I own him or something, but I did not receive the March 15th commission bill until a couple days ago, because he had it under his own review, and I just received the April 15th commission bill yesterday. So, the notion that I would pay something that I hadn't even received, and you're going to order me to pay something I hadn't even received, I defer to the Commissioners to do their review and due diligence with any of their vendors' billings, but I just received March 15th and April 15th. So if you go through with ordering this, it's pretty absurd, because I just got March and April this week.
Diane, I hate to put you on the spot, but March, the document that you prepared for me shows that everything was submitted and it was on hold from March? Any corrections to that?
I went off of what I have in our office.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Haney, would you like to second that motion?
We can't order him to pay something that hasn't been approved by the board.
We're ordered to pay everything that has been approved, I believe.
To my knowledge, everything that's been approved by this board in a public meeting has been paid. Is that correct, Mr. Auditor?
That's correct.
Thank you. That's correct.
That's correct.
$37,275.10 has not been paid, and that was approved by this board, so...
No, no, it hasn't.
I'm going to second Mr. Morzynski's motion, pardon me?
It was not approved by the board in a public meeting, no.
All right, we have a disagreement. I'm going to second the motion, all those in favor of the motion to order the auditor to pay the approved claims to Friedman and Associates indicate by saying aye.
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 Nay.
We have two ayes and one nay, the motion is carried. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. I'd ask that any members of the public who wish to speak, try to restrict your comments to three minutes or a reasonable amount of time, we have removed the timer so that you can have a little bit of wiggle room, but please be respectful in your thoughts and ideas. Anyone from the public who wishes?
Yeah, and so you know, if you're here from either Meadowview or from Kingsberry Creek, you know, we were supposed to have a public meeting, they got canceled, there was good reason to do that, but I have asked our engineer, fellow, anybody who's involved in this, that we need to schedule a public meeting soon, because there's a lot of questions, and a lot of, I know a lot of people ask me questions that I can't answer, because I don't know. We need to have this meeting, though, with the contractor and with our folks, so we can answer some questions, so you know.
So I would ask at that meeting that the engineer, the planner, and the surveyor attend that meeting?
Yes.
As well as any other parties?
And Woodruff, and USI.
Yep, thank you. Hello, Mr. Beach.
Hello. Wow, the fireworks are ready. I'm Randy Beach, 4177 West Schultz Road.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it hard to hear me when you're not in Florida? Anyway, I want to thank Commissioner Mathias for putting a stop to the industrial operations that exploited the property that connected to mine. It was way over six years. Constant cleanup of sand at the citizens' homes, the properties over six years, of noise pollution, air pollution, debris that needed constant cleanup. A cleanup that only came when the state would get involved. Road repairs at taxpayers' expense from the sand pits, using roads merely for the purpose of convenience, they should have never been traveled per code. I tried working directly with the county for over five years, wanting this to stop. I was using their suggestions and attorney, and his suggested legal counsel. It was never-ending money pit for myself and my neighbors, never-ending money pit that my neighbors and myself found ourselves in. Finally, in July, I started approaching this commission at the semi-monthly meetings, addressing the codes and the wrongdoings that we all know and witnessed happening. While the pit has since been ordered closed for the business, the people that helped it gain its operational status remain in public office, and most likely are continuing a helping hand in allowing the other code violations to continue. We all know that it was Anthony Hendricks that filled out the paperwork that was misinforming the county and the state on what the true natural layout and what property layouts were. A misdirection of residential land was slid in as well. Many people were on the MS4 operational charts that allowed this to happen in my neighborhood and are still active in making decisions that affect LaPorte County residents. Richard Morzynski, Mike Poland, Commissioner Mathias are three of them. After shifting away from MS4, Mike Poland then went as far as making unfounded accusations in Commissioners' meetings about people in the neighborhood, this while he has a sitting position as the LaPorte County Building Commissioner. I haven't a clue why he thought the sand pit was a necessary betterment of the county or what code it was followed. It sure affected our neighborhood in a negative light for a couple of years. Next, we got to see the county attorney, Shaw Friedman, email incorrect information to myself and the sitting Commissioners. I'm pretty sure while getting paid as an acting attorney, alleging things that were false, again, was this for the betterment of the county? Was it for helping the neighborhood? We have been told by too many people that Rich Morzynski had all the overweight signs removed from our neighborhood. Was this to help the trucking of the sand for the betterment of the county? We have already covered in here a few times about the owner of the sand pit driving the only vehicle pulled over during the onset of all this. But the newest name to the six-year, 11-month list is Sheriff John Boyd. We all received the emails that were sent back and forth between the sheriff and I about the truck traffic on Schultz Road. The traffic should have never been allowed according to the old codes or the new. The sheriff even tried to deflect the words about the operational pit as it wasn't contested. Comments are not stated in codes, regulations are. Once again, we are needing to get another department of the county elected and appointed to do the job they swore an oath to do. What is the gain of the county to allow this overweight traffic driving on all county roads? One of my neighbors had sent an email a couple of days ago to the Commissioners addressing why are you repairing the roadways if the illegal traffic is still being allowed? To date, she has not received an answer. Again, Commissioner Mathias, I thank you for stopping the industrialized sand pit from its operations. I truly pray that you keep it from reopening. It was not conducive to the neighborhood, it was not for the betterment of the county. This is for all three of you. I keep bringing this up because all of this was wrong. It was all unethical, it was all unwanted, it was all an overreach. I hope this can find closure before the election. If not, I hope the election finds the ethics needed for the positions that you hold. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
Take a deep breath, it's nothing political. This is even better than political stuff, this is more sand issues. Alan Stevens, president, South County Community Coalition. Permission to approach?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, this Monday night at LaCrosse, we had our monthly South County Community Coalition meeting, and we had a large group from Prairie Township come to the meeting, and the issue is the Ozinga sand pit down in Prairie Township on 1650, which is a legitimate M Shaw licensed sand mine, they are an actual sand mine, they got permission from the BZA to operate, but now they're wanting to expand their operations into crushing, okay? They claim they're going to start out crushing aggregate produced at the plant. The fear of most of the neighbors is, they're probably going to be bringing construction debris, concrete, asphalt in, and crushing it for resale. It's bad enough what these people have to put up with out there in 1650, they were, by the BZA approval, they were allowed to operate 7A to 7P, and they're routinely starting at 5:00 and 5:30. Lots of truck traffic out there, lots of noise. That's probably one issue you guys could look into is the original BZA approval and them operating outside the scope of it. The second issue is the IDAM permit, which is the paperwork I gave you, they're... They're they're applying for an IDAM permit to run the crusher. And what we've urged everybody to do, and we're working with Commissioner Haney, State Rep Pressl, State Rep Boy, is forcing IDAM to actually have a hearing down in Prairie Township on this matter. And I guess what I would like to ask the commission tonight is if if you guys could sign on to a letter to IDAM asking them to go ahead and hold the hearing. That way, all these people down here in Prairie Township kind of get their their day in court in front of IDAM. And I do believe there's multiple people here from Prairie Township. I don't know if any of them are going to come up and speak or not, but I appreciate your time. Again, sand, we got north sand, we got middle sand, and now we got a South County of sand issues. So thanks for your your attention tonight.
Thank you.
Have you presented this to the building commission?
Yes, they're, yes, they're aware.
Well, actually, it's already there, yeah.
Yeah, actually, this afternoon, I was reviewing some emails, and the building commission has reached out to IDAM on behalf of the group that met last night requesting a public hearing. So that is in process, and so we'll make sure to follow through with that.
Yeah, it would just be nice to, you know, if it's seems like if it's just everyday people asking, hey, IDAM, will you have this hearing? It goes, you know, kind of in one ear and out the other. It seems like when when our elected officials make a request, it seems to carry a lot more weight. So I definitely appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Stevens. I I sent IDAM a letter already in regards to this. I would be be happy if you would be amenable to make a motion to send a letter from the Board of Commissioners as a whole to IDAM, asking them to hold a hearing in regards to this operation.
That's a great idea. I'd be happy to do that. Are you amenable to that? Yep, we'll we'll take care of that. Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, that was, I'm sorry, that was a motion.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to send a a letter to IDAM requesting a public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. We have a motion in a second to send a letter to IDAM requesting a public hearing on the old-school crushing company operating out of the Ozinga pit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. We'll get that going. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Dennis Lance. I'm here about the Kingsbury Creek. And since I formally learned something tonight, is it all right if I approach with some paperwork?
Absolutely.
First question I want to ask is that, did any of you ever see this letter from the county highway before tonight?
I believe I have.
Okay.
I'm not exactly sure because it does, it isn't signed, actually. So that's that's was, I went to the back right away to see what this, what the signature was. So it's a report?
What it is, is what we got to, Marty Malkin, who is with the state IDAM, is responding back to, this was a letter that the county sent to him down at IDAM, and and then he sent a copy to all of us of what this letter was that was sent down there. But I wanted you to look at a couple of things that was on this letter, and this is part of the reasons that we wanted to have this meeting right away. And I can tell you that we're concerned that they're going to procrastinate long enough on this, that it's going to start the work and they're going to be able to do things and we're not going to be able to change anything. And as long as you're upstream, you don't care. But if you're downstream, you do care. And there's some things that I want to point out in here, and then then I'll let you have your, I'll be done. Anyway, it's got the strategic, I mean, the statistic, get the right word here, data that shows the flow of the stream, and it's the chart at the bottom of the first page. And it shows what the flow rate is on there, and that's what we were told. I want you to look at the date on that. It is November 1st, 1970. It's 52 years old information that they're using on this report. Fifty-two-year-old report. There's nothing else that's more new than what that is. So then I want you to go to the second page, and it says at the very bottom of it, the next to the last line, it says, "One septic system has failed in the subdivision or subdivision that has been reported." So now I want you to go to the third page that's in there. Oh, not the third page, the page with the subdivision with the, and I've got it highlighted in yellow on there, and it says, "At least four homes in the past year have lost their septic systems," and it gives the numbers on them. So they say there's one, and now we've got another report that says that there's four, and this report was from the state, from the county also. So we're getting very bad information back and forth trying to get this thing to go through. And I want you to look at the last page on the three that are stapled together, and that was came back from the Marty Malkin report. If you can tell me what in the world that blue line is that goes through, the the blue-green line that goes through there, it means absolutely nothing. It's not a ditch, it's not a drain, it's not anything. Somehow, they got a silly blue line that's going through there that's supposed to have, and when the state looks at it, they have no idea what that means. And the reason I want to bring that up on this is that at one of my gas stations that I built, Mobil gave me a set of plans that was from Mobil. I sent the plans down to the state. The state approved the plans, and then when I had the contractor come up to put the footings in for the business, he said the footing prints that they that they approved were for the fence that goes around where your trash container is. So do I necessarily trust everything that professionals tell us is going on? No, I don't. Well, that's what I wanted to show you there. The next one that I wanted to show you is showing the subdivision itself, and and it shows the drain lines that are going through there. And my biggest concern is, is that if you look towards the towards the far right-hand side, there's a dotted line that goes up through there, that's actually awful close to where the retention pond is. Now, why in the world would we be running a line from their retention pond that goes across there? And that retention pond right now is about four foot deep, and if we get any rain at all, it fills up the retention pond. So the retention pond needs to be dug out, but we can't be letting them, if this goes through, having them run stormwater or running water off the streets down to that creek. We were promised that that was not going to take place. And also, if you look at this, it shows that all the laterals are back in there, and we do not want the laterals in there. And that was agreed by you guys at the last meeting, they weren't going to do it, and now they put it back in there. So if we don't catch this stuff, who's going to tell you what they're doing behind that we don't think is ethical? And and then I'm going to go to the to the last page that I gave you. This is just on a subdivision that was just done in in the in Kingsbury itself, the one that Mr. Atwood owns. And if you look on the right-hand side of it, it says Martian Woods, and this is for the for the subdivision, a lot that just sold out there, but it says FEMA zone line. What the heck is FEMA? Does FEMA have to get involved with this? Is this, I think it's different. It's Flood Emergency Management Association or something like that. It's not the the one where we think of FEMA, but we have no FEMA reports on any of this, and yet it's it's right in the in the thing that shows what it is. So it shows that it's a marsh and it shows a woods, and it shows the FEMA line. Well, at the last meeting when we were here, we were ridiculed because they said, we don't, we know you people don't want to have that run over to Travis Ditch because it wouldn't be right for you guys to run your floodwater in the flood zone that you're in, into Travis Ditch and have it affect the other people that are up and down that Travis Ditch line. Okay, that's true. But if you follow Travis Ditch down to the industrial park where it ties into Kingsbury Creek and then goes into the Kankakee. So all of the port, city of LaPorte's water that they're running down there is going into our flood zone river. And we were told that, boy, you can't run that over to Travis Ditch, but that's what's happening. Another thing that they they said, that we don't, we don't need to put a shut-off valve on there. My concern about the shut-off valve on it is that he said if the water is high enough in the stream, that it's going to stop the water from going into the stream, won't go through. That's exactly right. How much is the fall between where it goes in on Kingsbury School Road, 75 West, I think it is, till where it gets to my house, which is a mile and a half down? Because if that's the case, if they, if it shuts off at two foot here, does that mean that I got four foot of water and all of my properties flooded at my house? So that's not right. There has to be some type of shut-off. What we're asking is that somewhere on the stream, preferably down by Highway 6, that there's a marker that puts that gets put into the stream, and that, I'm just going to use some example, that if it gets up to three foot, they have to shut the valve off, and when it gets back to 30 inches, they can open it back up. But there has to be some way that you can protect the people that are downstream for what's happening on that. I I was hoping that that somebody from Woodruff is going to be here because common sense tells me that that Woodruffs would more than likely want to stop down, start down at Kingsbury Creek and go backwards so that when they get down to the subdivision, that they can drain the water right away into the pipe that's there. So that's, but we were said that they were going to put that in there. So here's the predicament then. They put everything into subdivision, they run it out to the street, and then they're supposed to test it to see where it is. Where are they going to run that water? Where are you going to run thousand, million gallons in one day down, down, you can't run it anywhere, so where are they going to do it to test it to see if it works? So these are all questions that need to be asked, and we don't want to have it procrastinated anymore. We want these things put in it. We want it put in an ordinance form. One of the others, we want it in an ordinance form. We don't want anybody that in in up and down that street to be able to hook onto it. We don't want somebody that Dr. Kessling sells his house, and there's problems back in there, and it's still in there, that he hooks onto that same run and runs more water down there. It's supposed to resolve the problems in that subdivision. We're willing to work with those people, but we don't want it to resolve, to take care of problems for everybody else in different parts of that area. So hopefully, you can get this meeting signed up for us. I know there's a couple of other people that want to ask some questions also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank Dennis, that good report. That's something I have insisted on, is two things, which we passed here, is they not have laterals and that you have a shut-off. You got to have a shut-off. We've insisted on that. You know, you and I have been friends for a long time, and and your brother Dave. I know a lot of people who live on Kingsbury Creek that are my friends, all people who live in Meadowview that are my friends. This has to be right, and you're right. We can't procrastinate longer. The the last meeting that we were supposed to have, there was a reason it had to be canceled, but this, we need to have the meeting. I just sent an email just tonight, said we need to schedule this. Now, people are asking questions. I don't know what the heck to tell them.
Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andy Menick. I'm here about the Kingsbury Creek Meadowview. So and I want to say thank you to all you guys that I've talked on the phone to me. I appreciate that. We had good conversations, I feel like. And also, Jay Sullivan's been great to talk to, so appreciate that. When my wife and I bought our farm along Kingsbury Creek, we wanted to clear old tree rows and have a term, and we had to have a determination done through the NRCS to determine if we could complete that work. Keep in mind, we footed our own bill. NRCS declared the land along the creek a wetland and a flood zone. During high rain events, I monitor the water and see the water go over the banks and flood my little fields. I'm not allowed to do any drainage or even remove trees or blockage from the creek by the rules of the DNR and IDAM. Kingsbury Creek is not a drainage ditch. Because it is not a drainage ditch, it's not under the jurisdiction of the Drainage Board. Attempting to use it as a drainage ditch and work around the authority of the Drainage Board seems like an unethical loophole to me. I did Zoom in at the last meeting. I was actually on a family vacation. Don't know how Zoom works that well, so I couldn't get in to speak. I tried, but I don't know how, maybe I was supposed to hit a button or something, like I just tried speaking and I couldn't get on. But a couple of things I, notes I made from that meeting, though, they said they looked at many options about this drainage issue, but then when they brought up the options, all the options were just draining it into Kingsbury Creek. There was no other, no other option. So I just think there was really one option. Supposedly, you voted to take out the laterals, but they're still in place in the plans. And the hired engineer that spoke at the beginning of that meeting, not, you know, from our county, didn't seem too impressed with the plan and brought up water quality issues. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Harold Barr, not to be confused with Martin Barr, who's another farmer in the area. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. My my farm ground would be the first affected by the by the ditch that comes through there, by the extra water that comes through the creek. And if I have a loss of income, where do I go? Does that fall back on the county or, you know, if it's if it's due to flooding from from the water coming in there from Noawoc?
Our goal is that you won't have flooding, but I know you have flooding currently at some of the low points, but our goal is that it's not, we're not taking one neighborhood's problem and making it another neighborhood's. That's that's the ultimate goal. And I think that, you know, let's be clear, this this meeting is that we're going to hold, we, the reason it was postponed is that we had some experts that were not, were not prepared and ready to to answer these questions, and the three of us are not technical experts. So sometimes citizens are calling me, asking me really hard engineering questions, and I wish I was that smart, but I don't, that's not my area of expertise. So we want to bring the right people to answer the questions so that you're not coming and, you know, wasting your time. And that's the only reason that there was a delay, not to inconvenience people, but why gather people together and have them really frustrated when the right people with the answers aren't there? Because if you ask me the questions, I'm going to look at you with that, like, sorry, I don't know. And, you know, but your questions are well meant. You know, we don't want to take one problem and make it another person's problem. That's not right. And the the goal is to try to solve the problem because 40, 50 years ago, there were some decisions made about construction where they did not take it, take information about the water table into consideration.
Yeah. I have a, I have another farm that borders Travis Ditch, and so I know that that area really well, too. And there's no comparison between Kingsbury Creek and Travis Ditch. Travis Ditch has been dredged, I don't know how many times over the years. It's deep. It could handle way, way more water.
Right.
Without any kind of flooding. So that's, that's just a suggestion of mine.
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot.
President, if we could, and this may help the neighbors to know what the status is with the professional team. Commissioner Brzezinski contacted me several days ago and said, please get ahold of Woodruff, also get ahold of our professional team to see where things are at, and and the neighbors need to know. Mr. Hendricks, and he copied the engineer, the planner and the highway superintendent who are all working on this, said, this is on May 13th. We went out today, marked the project, paint marks where the manholes go, and right-of-way marker lays for the road right-ofways. Working around the utilities, gas and fiber should be within reason to put the stormline down the east side of County Road 75 East of the northbound paved lane, staying away from the gas lane. The county highway will have to pave the lane after it's installed. We also have benchmarks along the route. I will send those out when I'm done, checking them for accuracy. I talked with two owners out there. This is Mr. Hendricks. They confirmed the ponding of the county road in two low spots when it rains as being a problem that this line will solve. The most revised set of plans and all other information has been posted on a link off the LaPorte County website for anyone to get and review. So that was the latest from the surveyor, who's kind of the quarterback of the professional team that is working on this, but I wanted that, at least in the record, that Mr. Hendricks had gotten back to us, as had Mr. Woodruff, indicating they're waiting, and as soon as they've got the final plan set, they can do the material orders and get things moving at this point.
All right, so we want to have the meeting before they start digging so that we can answer these questions.
Agreed.
Okay. So, Mr. Sullivan, you you understand that we need to get the meeting scheduled. Thank you. Thank you.
Don Melner, speaking out of Kingsbury Creek. Again.
You'll have to talk into the mic.
Don Melner, speaking out of Kingsbury Creek. I was too troubled. Can you hear me?
No.
Are you able to hear?
No.
They're having trouble hearing you, I'm sorry. Can you pull the mic a little closer, perhaps?
Okay, I was troubled, too, when the work session was canceled. And I do hope that it's rescheduled. I can't talk much louder. It just doesn't pick me up. And I hope that it is rescheduled before any more materials are purchased and the project[1747.16] it is rescheduled before any more materials are purchased and the project begins. And I would like to know the distance between the septic fields and the water wells, because I think that goes a long way to determining any water contamination. And so I'd like that question answered. And I would also like to know why different options were not considered. If you read the letter that I sent, my email, April 25th to the commissioners and the council, there were many options addressed. So those need to be considered, seriously considered. And also, Noock can be done on or around the creek due to environmental considerations from April until June, generally throughout the year. So that's another consideration. So I hope that we can meet, seriously consider other options, because once a natural stream is altered and destroyed, there is no mitigation for that. So other options need to be seriously considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sherri Bannack. I live at 4551 South, 75 West. Thank you once again for talking to us. Mr. Friedman brought up a great point about what Hendricks said. He stated that this project is going to be on the east side of the road. Unfortunately, no one really knows. I talked to Jay. Jay's great to talk with. But the plans say the west side of the road. Hendricks is saying the east side of the road. No one really knows where this outlet is going to be at, at this point in time. So I think transparency, once again, we all just need to sit down, talk about where it's going to be. I think it's very important that if the outlet is going to have to be where it's going to be on the Kingsbury Creek, which I don't approve whatsoever, the water needs to make sure it stays in the right-of-way, because at this point in time, from the plans that I've viewed recently, that we just got from IDAM yesterday, which is on the west side of the road, there's nothing to prevent the water from going outside of the right-of-way and flooding private property. I don't believe anyone has had notification or easements. You know, you guys have never requested easements. I don't know if that has to happen or whatnot of wherever the water falls onto private property, but obviously, you know, we need this work, workshop so that we can all talk about what's going on, what's going to happen. I know you guys have depended on your professionals, your surveyor, your engineer, Woodruff, whomever else, but, you know, some of the information that we're being told, we're confused. We don't know who to believe at this point in time. Just like Friedman said, you know, Hendricks is saying the east side of the road, Sullivan's saying the west side of the road, IDAM's saying something else. Who knows? It might cross the road and go to the east if it's on the west. We don't know. But, you know, the data that Dennis was talking about, about the stream stat information that Hendricks provided back on the April 6th meeting, he provided that information that he, he was stating that basically we can go and look on stream stats and look at this Kingsbury gauge that's on the creek and see that it's got 0.32 whatever for the, what, or 3.2 feet per second for the harmonic flow. Well, that was based upon 1970 to 1986. When I went to try to find updated data, I actually emailed the website. Paul Baker responded from USGS and said, oh, that was discontinued in 86 due to lack of funding. So if he's using information way back when, how do we know that really the amount of water that's flowing in the creek is truly what it is? And if we put more water in the creek, is it really, is it going to flood? I mean, he's using 40, 50-year-old information. I do have a letter from Paul, too, that I'd like to present to you.
Thank you.
So these professionals that you guys are depending on, we don't, we don't trust them. I mean, it's hard when we have so much information that has been passed along to us, that we just don't know what to believe. We don't want to flood out. We downstream don't want to flood out. We, we understand Noock has had some issues. I don't know how much issues they've had publicly. I don't know if there's been a survey done of all the homes on Noock Drive to see how many people have finished basements and how many people aren't having flooding recently. But in 2008, everyone had flooding. I had flooding, my basement flooded, Harold's. I know Harold's basement flooded, Lapeur County flooded. So we all have flood issues when rains come in. I get that. I'm not going to come to you guys to ask to take care of my business, though. So I think that, you know, more research should be done before you spend a million dollars of our tax dollars to put this drain in. And if you guys do move forward with this drain after we did the workshop, who's going to be monitoring it? How often are you going to be monitoring it? Obviously, I don't want there to be a conflict of interest to someone that works for a contractor that lives in the subdivision to be monitoring this. Obviously, a valve, a shut-off valve needs to happen, because if they're flooding up there, it's very possible that we're flooding downstream, too. So, I mean, just think of us, I guess. I know that we came in at the, the back end of the ship here, but, and they've had 12 years to complain, and they've been the squeaky wheel. We just found out about this two months ago. So we're just trying to play catch-up here, and we would like there to be more transparency, to figure out really where this drain is going to be, and really the amount of flow that's going down the creek. Obviously, we have a lot to think about here, and our stream, we need to preserve our stream. It's, it's a, it's a beautiful wetland area. We get it's a wetland, but we don't want someone else's water be pouring on, you know, onto private property. First of all, if it drops, you know, directly into the creek, that's fine, but don't think that we're going to just sit down and let you guys put your water on our private land.
Thank you. When we have this meeting, I want to make sure that everybody is there. I want to make sure you have all your questions. I guarantee you, the meeting will not be over until everybody's questions are successfully answered. And so plan on being sandwiched, because we're going to stay there until they get it done. Thank you. I'm two sandwiches, but.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
Hi, April Daly from 1707 North, 675 West Lapeur. I've never been in politics before, and I got to tell you, after a four-hour BZA meeting last night, we have to be better. I mean, there has been, seems like a lot of the times that can has been kicked down the road. A perfect example is last night, the water department and the fire department, they're, it seems like we're not utilizing the people that we need to utilize to make decisions that we have to make as a group and as a, as a community. And all I can say is, we have to put ourselves in people's shoes. I mean, this is their home. This is everybody's homes, and I don't feel like they're being heard. And once again, this is me coming in from an outsider, from an outsider view. And we have to get better, because people are not being heard. We should not be relying on 50-year-old data. We, they should not be coming here time and time and time again to get their questions answered. So somebody, I don't know if you need an advocate for them, but somebody has to be held accountable. People have to do the things that are right. We have to be able to sleep at night. And we need to focus on current problems, not talking about bills that have already been approved and start doing things that you were voted on to do for the people of this community. Not throw sand at people, not continually hash up old, old things that have already been taken care of. We have to get better. This is just, it's just too much, seriously.
Thank you. So the purpose of the meeting that we've been discussing is so that there have been studies that were done on this, on this, before this, the, the stream group became involved. There has been data that was gathered by a previous professional that is not related to the county, was hired by the county. So we need to bring all of that and lay it out on the table. The only reason the meeting was delayed was because we didn't have the data. We knew that people would have questions, and we, we didn't have the correct people there to, to speak to it. So we will get that. But I would agree that we need better coordination, and we've been talking internally about how do we create a technical advisor group? So all of these development issues. Now, my concern, to be honest, is that Lapeur County is attracting a lot of development interest, because we are not as expensive as Porter County and St. Joe County, and we have a lot of land, and we don't want it messed up. So we need to be really intentional, and you will be hearing a little bit about that later in the meeting, but thank you so much.
And one more thing, if I can bring it up. The 39 Conservancy District, I'm not really sure how that works, but that's another thing that seems to be a can that's been kicked down the road time and time and time again. And now you have people that are trying to do senior, senior, senior housing, and they can't even do it because there's not enough water flow. So I don't know what happened 20 years ago, but we have got to get better, because this is not working.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom, Darlene, that would like to speak?
Hi, this is Sean Pegg, and I live in Wanted. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I have a, a compliment and a criticism that I'd like to bring before you tonight. The compliment is, I want to thank the commission, and I want to thank the council for their leadership on voting and moving ahead with the public safety local income tax. I know it was a hard decision, and there were other options available from some members of the public and from some bodies, but I, I want to applaud you for doing the right thing. It was a tough choice for everyone involved, and I just, I think, I just want to praise you in that respect. However, I, I have a criticism, and it's not, I'm trying to be fair and nice about it, but Chief, you mentioned, Commissioner Mateus, that development was coming to the county. People want to move here. Businesses want to develop here. Every day in the paper, I see in the, the dispatch, I see people hearing announcements about jobs, manufacturers, people wanting to move here, all great things for our county. But when I read headlines in the same paper saying, where Chief Dion Campbell is saying that violent crime is on the rise, violent offenders are being arrested in stepped-up criminal patrols by Michigan City Police, that doesn't, that doesn't bode well for our future for this county, because I shouldn't be having to hear from Chief Campbell about what the NCPD is doing. I shouldn't be hearing from Chief Breton about what Lapeur is doing. I need to be hearing from the prosecutor, John Lake. What are you doing as the chief law enforcement official in this county to tag down crime? I heard him on the radio yesterday saying, talking about crime statistics or trial statistics, his trial experience, comparing himself to the previous administration. But I want to know what he is doing now. I want to hear what the commissioners are going to do about the violent crime going on in Michigan City, because if that keeps happening with inflation, with higher crime, no one is going to want to move here, and we're going to be having another Gary on the lake. Michigan City will become Gary, because if no one wants to work here, no one wants to move here, we all suffer. And I just wanted to say that. So I, I thank you for having me on, and thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you so much. Were there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Hearing none, let's move on. Next on the agenda, we have department head comments and reports. I do have a, a report from the commission office. We received a letter dated May 16th that I'd like to read into the record, because it is, it relates, relates to questions about real estate. It's from Woodland and Waters Real Estate Incorporated from Waukatoona, Indiana, and it's signed by Larry Nichols, managing broker, co-owner Woodland and Waters Real Estate. May 16th, 2022, to the Lapeur County Commissioners, Lapeur County Attorney, and all the others to whom this may concern. Recently, I have received telephone calls, some texts, as well as personal comments from various residents of Lapeur County concerning the fact that my company and I have the former Lapeur County home listed for sale. It seems there are some people who believe they are somehow being taken advantage of by the previously held public auction of the Lapeur County home. This was exactly that, and this is in caps, "public auction." According to county regulation, it was duly processed and advertised, as all county auctions must be. I've explained to the few that called. They, too, could have gone to the auction and bid if they had wanted to, but they don't seem to want to hear that. To the best of my current knowledge, the winning bidder was the only person to attend the auction. No one else was there to bid. When the auctioneer asked for the opening bid amount, the buyer bid. Since winning that bid for the late 1800s-built structure, the current owner has brought in numerous work crews and equipment, completely stripped the interior of the 22,000-square-foot building, 33,000 square feet if you add in the basement. The structural integrity of the building, the plumbing, the electric, and all mechanicals are now fully exposed. The builder was able to thoroughly evaluate the entire building and land for any future next-level possibilities. In addition to all of the countless dumpsters that removed debris from the building, it was cleaned and organized. All of this was done at considerable expense to the owner. The winning bidder then brought in a certified architectural and engineering firm to help bring forward the concept for the new building, the Lapeur County Ag and Events Center. This location is perfect, situated directly across from the Lapeur County Fairgrounds and all of its 4-H and agricultural-related events. This is a very unique and ambitious concept for all types of events, weddings, seminars, and more. This is inclusive of a magnificent bridal suite and 22 additional hotel-type rooms, restaurant, bar, and outdoor venues. The list of possibilities goes on and on. There now exists a full set of construction blueprints, including structural, electric, and all mechanical, at an additional cost of approximately $150,000. The plans are ready for anyone, a potential buyer, to, to send to Indiana State Authorities for commercial approval. Construction could conceivably begin in 30 days or so, pending approval by the state. In summary, the current owner has invested a great amount of money over and above the initial auction price for the property, and has certainly gone above and beyond to provide the greatest opportunity for success for the next owner. Lapeur County citizens should be thrilled at the prospect that exists, considering the projected demolition estimates could have exceeded 1 million. After careful consideration of all aspects of the land and the building, I listed the property for 895,000. I hope this explanation offers insight to those who feel that there has been somehow underhanded deeds at play here, that the reality is quite the contrary. The potential benefit to the residents of Lapeur County should be viewed with gratitude that someone had the insight and savvy to take on this project, versus what could have been a very costly expense to the county to demolish a building at the end of its useful life. We should all be grateful he was there to make that opening and only bid. Respectfully, Larry Nichols, managing broker and co-owner. I wanted to read that into the record for the public's information.
Madam President, and I appreciate you having read that into the record, because this commission, my office, has been questioned numerous times about the county home, and I appreciate you having read that letter into the record, because I think it's important for the public to understand, we followed the law to the letter in the sale of the county home. The new owners have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in that place in the two years since buying it to justify a higher asking price. Like you and other elected officials who work hard at following the law and providing good, honest county government, I have frankly had it up to here, with keyboard warriors like Mr. Slaybaugh going online and making accusations about my ethics or anyone else here without a shred of proof to back it up. This is the same Mr. Slaybaugh, who has just sent a cease and desist letter by the Building Trades Attorney this past week, in a post on our tax dollars and how they're wasted. Mr. Slaybaugh not only accused me this afternoon of defrauding taxpayers by billing for political work, such as writing for Howie Politics, absolutely untrue. He accused me without a shred of proof of, quote, "trying to defraud taxpayers" with his buddy's rundown warehouse, again, completely false and outrageous.
Point of order, Your Honor. Point of order. What does this have to do with the commission meeting? This is settling a personal score by the county attorney.
This is the department head of the public.
This is not relevant to a county commission meeting.
Thank you.
It's settling a personal score. This is inappropriate, sir.
I've been recognized by the chair.
It's inappropriate, sir.
Appreciate that.
You have a personal score with someone in the public.
Please, you have not been recognized. Please be quiet.
Again, completely false.
Mr. Friedman, if you could, if you could leave out references to a citizen and go ahead with your...
I will. It was, the problem is it's posted on our tax dollars and how they're wasted. And the problem is that when someone goes online and posts online without the facts to back it up, then it is false, and it maligns not only the elected officials, but my office. The claim has also been made that we've sold out taxpayers in the county home, and we followed the statute to the letter. How dare anyone say that taxpayers are being charged when I'm suing the auditor on my own time and my own dime to collect fees that he has unlawfully withheld to my firm? This is an open challenge to all the big, tough keyboard warriors out there. I say to them, there is a grand jury meeting downstairs. It is meeting right now in the old Superior Court III. You take any evidence you think you have to that grand jury, where you're going to have to testify under pain and penalty for perjury about what you've got. What I say to all the keyboard warriors, talk is cheap, but when you're dealing with reputations and questioning integrity, you better have something to back it up. I'm suggesting to anyone, call the prosecutor's investigator, Anthony McClintock, at 219-326-6808, and offer to go testify. It is time that they put up or shut up, and if you've got evidence, take it to the grand jury. Prosecutor, because of all the claims of corruption and conflict of interest and abusive process, has convened a grand jury, and he is taking evidence under oath or affirmation. It is time for anyone who thinks that they've got any evidence of wrongdoing, conflict of interest, or fraud, to take that to the grand jury. And that's all I'm saying at, at this time, but I think it needed to be addressed, Madam President, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman, I am going to call you out on the fact that you mentioned a citizen, because I don't think that's appropriate. And Mr. Slaybaugh, or I'm not sure if I said your name wrong. I'm sorry. I apologize on behalf of the commission that that occurred, because we don't, we don't need to, yeah.
This is, uh, I think it's only fair.
I didn't hear it. No, this is a department head report. I'm sorry. Um, but I apologize. Um, are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the commission. Just quickly, uh, we were celebrating the Third Times a Charm, uh, Connect, Connectivity Grant from the State of India. I just wanted to make sure that I was making the public aware of the fact that the Community and Economic Development Department's working aggressively with the Office of Community and Rural Affairs in Indianapolis, uh, our county GIS office and the, the three successful awardees at getting, getting a, a very descript, detailed, interactive map available and up so that the, those that are concerned about whether or not they're going to be connected will have real-time data available to them. I wanted to make sure I brought that forward to the, to the commission and the public.
I, I'm getting a lot of questions of people saying, I, I see that their signs are nearby. Where are they? So if we could get that up and, and then make sure that the public knows that that's on there. And then also any addresses that I forward to you, if you could make sure that we are diligently responding to people because, you know, there's a lot of talk out there. A lot of people are really happy. They've gotten service, um, from less expensive than, than they had previously been told. People were being told, you know, 18, $20,000 out of their pockets to serve their home and we're hoping that, that, that diminishes and people get served. So keeping the information flow is really important.
It, it is, Madam President. And it's monument transformational for, for Laporte County that we were successful in this third time, uh, the third attempt here. So we, we want to make sure we're keeping the, the public as up to date as we can. We're working hard every day. Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any other department heads who wish?
He is working hard every day. How many, how many days a week do you suppose either you're in my office or I'm in your office with sites and with Reardon on economic development that we've got going on? Probably five days a week.
Yeah. Thank you. Hi, Jeremy.
Jeremy Sebicki from the Parks Department. I had a few items I wanted to mention. Um, Bloom County Park, the, the new playground that's been going in there since winter started. We've been struggling with the contractor issue and finally got it pretty much complete. We should be putting in, um, the playground surfacing next week. This is a, uh, you know, an all-inclusive playground, ramped, wheelchair accessible playground. So this is going to be really special in the county parks. We haven't, we don't have one yet, um, funded by the Healthcare Foundation and, um, got a new restroom out there, parking lots paved and ready to go. And then once we get the surfacing in, we'll be putting, um, sidewalks in and stuff like that. So hopefully by July, we're going to have a, um, hopefully by July, it'll be completely done and then every, you know, get things growing and we're going to have a, a grand opening kind of ribbon cutting thing on August 13th. Um, so, so keep that date in mind if, if, if people want to come to that. Uh, the Seabird property, we talked about this months ago and, and the idea was to, to wait till the plants started coming up. So we knew we wouldn't be impacting any, uh, uh, plants. Uh, we, we, last week, we put up all the boundary signs, um, making a sign for the, the, the start of it. The Highway Department went in and put a culvert in and, and provided us access. And then, um, whenever they get time to put in the gravel parking lot, we'll have a gravel parking lot there, uh, and a nice trail. So we're gonna, uh, hopefully, um, July is Parks and Recreation Month. I hope to have a, a kind of a ribbon cutting there. It'd be a good, good thing for a ribbon cutting. So, and lastly, I wanted to mention, um, we are struggling still to find seasonal help. So anybody knows anybody that needs, uh, a job for the summer, please have them come out to the parks and, and talk to us. We're, we're...
What age do they have to be? Can they be high school? 18?
Eighteen years old. And right now, we're, we have a couple of school age kids, um, that are coming, uh, but they'll be done by August. So we're still going to be probably hoping to get somebody for another couple of months after that. Uh, but that's still not going to give us enough people to cover the whole, all the parks we need. So right now, we have one person on staff covering, you know, and our, our full timers are having to, to cover, uh, the park. So please, if anybody knows anybody, please have them come see us. It's a good place to work. $13 an hour to start.
Since you're up, um, since you're up and we're at the end of department head reports, could you go ahead and, um, go ahead with your, the update on the DNR project at Bloom?
Yeah, sure. Um, so I was contacted by the DNR, um, in the winter, um, about, uh, potential wetland mitigation projects that, that they might be able to do near a park or in a park. Um, so what, what has happened, the, the DNR gets money from developers that impact wetlands and then the DNR is doing projects, bigger projects in different sites. So I, I showed them Bloom. I showed them some aerial photos and some ideas and, um, one of the projects they really like, and I've sent you guys all the maps and all of that stuff, would be to, to, um, take about 40, I don't want to say take, acquire about 45 acres from an adjoining landowner, um, which is about probably 25 acres of that is already wetland, kind of low quality wetland. It would need some restoration work. Uh, the DNR would acquire the land. They would do the restoration work. They would actually help reroute trail for us, um, around the project and do stream restoration work in that area. Right now, there's a deep, um, a deep drainage ditch that's actually a legal drain and I'm working with the drainage board to see if we can get that, um, available for this project. So essentially, this would be a DNR project. They would, they would purchase the land and do all the work until it's done and then they would give us that extra 45 acres and it would be a, a nice restored wetland and also some high land where you'd have a, a nice overlook of the wetland from the trail. So this is something that I, I truly believe is going to be a, a win-win for the county as far as Bloom County Park and add a really nice piece of property to that. And it, it is not a, um, eminent domain type of project. It would be a purchasing, you know, purchasing of the land by a willing seller, not, not anything else.
And your board and the foundation are fully supportive?
Yes. And right now, that land is in a easement with our, with our park foundation already, a conservation easement to where it cannot be developed, only a certain amount, you know, a couple houses and things like that. So it's not like it's, right now, it's farmland slash wetland and woods. So.
Thank you.
And basically, I was hoping for maybe a motion of...
Right, right. I was just going to ask if we had a motion of support. This project, yeah, is, uh, sounds like a win for, for the county. Uh, we have a motion. Do we have support?
Absolutely. Second.
So, uh, we have a motion of support for the DNR project at Bloom Park. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jeremy.
I was on there too for the, the item before that. Can we do that one too?
Oh yes, that's right. I'm sorry. I was so excited about the park. I forgot about the personnel issue. Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Charmaine Cock, everybody knows her as Charm or Shaw.
Charm, right.
Yeah. Um, is retiring. Uh, she's been with us since, well, not with us, but with the county since 1997. She started with us about, uh, four years ago and I was hoping to see if we could get her paid for her sick time.
Do you have the money or do you need to go to the council?
Um, yes, if we hire, I will probably have to go to the council for a little bit of it, but most of it will be taken care of. Uh, the total, I think, comes to about, uh, $3,300 and, um, I, I, I think I would have almost all of it because if we hire somebody new, uh, you know, that starts out at the lowest level, we would have that money left.
I'd make a motion. Do we approve the request for a sick leave? And also that if you need more money, uh, that you have permission to go to the council for that.
Thank you. Second.
We have a motion and second to support, um, paying sick days to Charmaine Cock who's retiring after many years of service to the county. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Please tell her happy retirement.
And one, one last thing on that DNR project. It is not a, obviously not a done deal until, you know, the DNR makes, you know, gets that willing seller and offer and all of that stuff. And, and so right now, it's just trying to, the planning process and making sure that it's going to be a project that can be done. So.
Thanks. Thanks so much.
Good job as always.
Thank you. Yeah, Jeremy, you're doing a great job. Thanks so much. Uh, next, under request, consider permission to approach the council regarding purchase of three power-load cot systems. Director Maguire.
Good evening. So we currently have a total of 11 ambulances. Um, that includes our online ambulances and also our backup ambulances. So of those 11 ambulances, four of them currently have a power-load system. So a power-load system is not only the cot is a power cot, but it also has a mechanism where it power loads into the back ambulance off of a track system. I think the rating, the weight capacity on that power-load system, about 800 pounds. So obviously, two of our employees would not be able to lift that much weight on their own without the power cot, power-load system. So three of our cots, three of the 11 are just a power cot without the power load or portion of it, and four of them are manual cots. Um, no power whatsoever. So of those four, um, that are just manual cots, we plan on trading those in within probably the next two to three years. So I'm not really too concerned about those, but the three that just have the power cots, we will probably have around for the next probably four to six years. So those are the ones I'm asking to convert to a power-load system. Um, the power-load system is kind of the industry standard and it has been for, for the past several years. Um, the only reason we didn't start buying them initially is because of the cost. But at this point, the benefit of the power-load system overshadows the cost. Um, as you, as you probably know, it's very common for EMS workers to be injured while lifting patients. And it typically happens when we lift in awkward positions or when we're rushed in lifting, which we sometimes are. But the second most common time when we're, uh, when our EMS workers are, are injured is when we do a deadlift, just straight up. So this would be lifting the manual cot straight up or lifting it into the ambulance. Um, so I, I, and I hate to say it, but people are not getting lighter and, and, and we've had many situations where we've had to call in fire departments, multiple fire departments, help, help us get a patient either out of the house or into the ambulance. Um, happens quite often, uh, honestly. Um, so I did a little research and I looked up what an average EMS worker's comp claim would be. Um, and that came, what I found was $69,594 on an average EMS worker's comp claim. But in reality, I can probably tell you with firsthand knowledge because we ourselves have had four long-term workers' comp claims in the last few years here. So one of them, uh, was a shoulder injury and this employee was off for 50 24-hour shifts, which equates to $33,600 in overtime alone. That's not medical expenses, MRI, surgery, nothing and all that. It's just the overtime that it costs to replace this employee. We had another employee that was off with a wrist injury that was off for 103 shifts, 103 24-hour shifts at a cost of 69,216. We also had a back injury. That individual was off for 110 shifts and that cost alone was 73,000, I'm sorry, yeah, $73,920. And unfortunately, that was a career-ending injury for that individual. And lastly, another shoulder injury and that individual was off for 181 shifts, 181 days of missed work. Um, so right now, EMS nationally and locally is facing a shortage. And so I think it's very important that we keep the employees we do have healthy and safe on the job, uh, to the best of our abilities. So the quote that I have for the three additional power-load systems would come to a total of $73,574. So I'm just asking permission to approach the council for that, that dollar amount.
I would move to allow the director to approach the council for funding for three power-cots. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, the, um, give permission to approach the council regarding the purchase of three power-load cot systems. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Maguire.
Madam President, really quick point of order. Um, for the department heads, I know we kind of jumped right ahead to Jeremy. Just, just want to call out if there's anybody else who wants to speak, either department head on Zoom or whatever. I see we have several on Zoom or here in person.
Are there any other department heads on Zoom that wish to speak?
I'd like to speak, actually. Good evening.
Good evening.
Just wanted to give you a report, commissioners, on the reissuance of the tax bills. It moves, it's moving apace. Certified net assessed values have been approved by the Department of Local Government Finance. Budget orders have been received. We are now in the process of creating the tax abstract. Uh, the bottleneck will be in the need to advertise three times over a period of two weeks with our so-called tax rate or tab rate chart in the papers. Uh, our goal is to get the tax bill out, um, by early June. Um, just wanted to comment a bit more on the issues with regard to the billings. Um, I want to remind you that, um, one of the key items in the Indiana Code with regard to my responsibilities, duties, obligations and the powers of the office of the auditor is to quote, "examine the terms of a contract in terms of paying a claim." Um, it is important, uh, one of the, the issue of the, uh, uh, county administrator is the Indiana Code section that talks about, uh, administrator is, uh, Indiana Code Section 36 dash 2 dash 2 dash 14. Um, if you want to make Mr. Friedman a county administrator, um, I will pay those claims that involve being an administrator. Uh, but it's very clear in the Indiana Code that the, the executive may appoint a county administrator to be the administrative head of the county under the supervision of the executive. It holds office at the pleasure of the executive. You may assign any office position or duties under your control to the administrator and by resolution withdraw any of the powers under the supervision of the executive and with the express authorization by resolution, the administrator may do these various list of duties that they put there. Um, those, I, those duties are not listed in Mr. Friedman's contract. I'm not allowed to pay those items. Uh, I don't, we're not allowed to pay those items. I think it's inappropriate to pay those items. Your powers are your powers and if you want to subrogate them to him, he's supposed to represent you on law and that's fine. And it's in your, it's in the contract that he's a policy advisor. I understand there's a lot of crossover between a respected attorney advising on law and how policy crosses over. But when phone calls are made to department heads, and at least I have two, at least two department heads telling me that, um, uh, I've received at least two reports of department heads of inappropriate meddling and even intimidation where items should not be billed. Um, I, I'm, I'm dealing with what I'm dealing with. Um, as far as following what the State Board of Accounts has said, the State Board of Accounts was very explicit with regard to the Franklin Street Bridge, that that was a $1.5 million no-bid contract and that if it's $150,000 or more, it has to go to bid. We can't follow the State Board of Accounts when we want to. What credibility does an attorney have when he advises not to follow the law, as he did with the Franklin Street Bridge, or to follow it when it suits him? The reference point that Mr. Friedman made with regard to the Franklin Street Bridge at you, one of your meetings is that the cat is out of the bag. The cat is out of the bag with regard to the State Board of Accounts. Now they know, so we're in trouble. So if we're going to follow what the state, what we claim the State Board of Accounts says, let's be consistent on it. Cause if we make a joke about what they, as some public officials were mocking the State Board of Accounts, then where's the rule of law in Laporte County? So I would advise you and respectfully ask you to make him, if you want him to administer the county and had, and aspects of managing the county, to follow Indiana Code, which he should be advising you because he's a, a late legal advisor, to make him and assign specific duties that involve being county administrator. Cause he shouldn't be able to do it behind the scenes and that's just not right. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Uh, Madam President, I think while we're here, I'll just cover this now, this letter, uh, that, uh, came in and was received by the, uh, county attorney from Woodlands and Waters. Uh, first, I gotta give them a shout out. They've done more, uh, here in this letter to promote, to promote the sale of the, uh, or at least the second sale of the county home, uh, than it appears the previous commission did. Um, the, the second part of this letter, uh, makes a lot of sense, you know, as far as for them responding to why the, why they listed it at $895,000. That second half of this makes a lot of sense, um, for them to want to respond to that, uh, you know, for justification for that. The first half though, it, it is curious to me that they would be recounting basically secondhand. I don't believe, I could be wrong, but I don't believe Woodlands and Waters had anything to do with the auction, uh, of the county home that happened previously by the county. So they're, they're, they're stating some things here as almost coming from firsthand facts. They would know about it, which obviously it would have to be, you know, second or third hand at this point coming from them. So it's important to put this, uh, this letter from them into context that, uh, while the second half is obviously something they can attest to since they're part of that and, and on it for the work that's been done since then. The, uh, this first half here is, you know, really doesn't have too much more credence than anything else that the, uh, so-called keyboard warriors our county attorney refers to, uh, would have either at that, in that point. So, thank you.
Mr. Haney, I would suggest respectfully to you, if you have any evidence that anything was done wrong with the county home sale, take it to the grand jury. They're meeting right downstairs. That's the place to do it, rather than create inferences that there was anything wrong or something inappropriate happened. That grand jury is meeting down there to hear any evidence of conflict of interest, fraud or corruption. fraud, or corruption. And I suggest you, if you've got anything, because I know you don't want to leave the inference that anything was done wrong with the county home sale, do you?
I'm not exactly sure what inference to leave that. I am curious, since, since you've decided to respond, this letter that came in from, from them, it came directly to your office.
Sure.
First, did you solicit this letter?
Absolutely. We asked Mr. Nickel, he's the agent for the, for the seller, because we're interested in finding facts rather than creating inferences and innuendo, Mr. Haney. And so we asked the agent for the county home to provide us information on exactly what transpired. And I suggest you, it's a good way to go about fact-finding. Get the evidence, get the information. And again, respectfully, sir, if you've got any evidence or information regarding the county home sale that was inappropriate, take it to the grand jury.
I appreciate your response on that. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consider permission for travel to Nashville for annual NADCP conference.
Madam President, I talked with Judge Thorne in his office. This is necessary, and they have the money. Therefore, I make a motion that we have to give them permission to travel there for this conference.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to consider permission for Superior Court Three to travel to Nashville for a conference. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Consider permission to approach the council for the $195,000 for Bridge 37, Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, Jay Sullivan, the county engineer. And I'm here to request permission to, to approach the council for the preliminary engineering fees for Bridge, Bridge 37 for $195,000.
I've met with Mr. Sullivan, also Mr. Bishop, about this. Normally, a bridge like this, it would take five, six, eight years of process to get it fixed. This bridge is in really bad shape, and to avoid an unnecessary bad accident, we need to act on this sooner, sooner than later. I would make motion, we give permission for Jay to approach the council for this funding.
Really curious, Jay.
That motion.
That motion, yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We had a couple of these come before us. How many bids did we get for this one?
We, I have two quotations. I have solicited another one.
This one was the second.
This is the lowest bid right now. So if it comes in lower, the next one comes in lower, then that would be the not-to-exceed cost.
Very good. Thank you. Second.
We have a motion and a second to consider permission to approach the council for $195,000 for Bridge 37 based on safety concerns. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. Madam President, can I just make one comment regarding that review?
Yes.
I wanted to leave everyone's concerns about the laterals. The laterals have most definitely been deleted from the project. I have this updated set of plans for Mr. Hendricks, and they've been deleted, I hope. And I will check tomorrow to make sure that the uploaded set also has the laterals deleted.
I'm glad you were here this evening because you heard some of the questions and concerns. So we'll need answers for those. Please share that with the team, those questions with the team so we're well prepared.
Absolutely. We will have answers to those questions.
And very knowledgeable.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your hard work. We appreciate it, Jay.
Consider second and final reading on Jake Brake's ordinance.
Madam President, this is something I brought to the, to the commission. We actually had first reading on this a few months ago, and I don't know, we, how it didn't get brought back, but it didn't. But I've had several complaints from different parts of the county, most recently where they dropped the speed limit on US 20 by Rolling Prairie to 45 mile an hour. Seems the truckers like to wait till they get there and then slam on the old Jake brakes. Very loud. People live way off the road, so they rattle in their windows. There's other parts of the county that have had this. In my investigation with INDOT, they said, we can put up signs, but you have to have an ordinance first that supports that.
With that, I over and over.
So I would make a motion that we adopt this ordinance on second reading by title only. That would be ordinance 2022, whatever, would be next. Ordinance prohibiting the use of compression release engine brakes or Jake brakes within LaPorte County. This would then give us the ability to post signs in the affected areas. That's my motion to adopt it on second reading.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Before we do this, real quick, Mr. Friedman, do we need to, since this is an ordinance, do we need to have a period of public comment for this for the second time around or no?
Yes, if you would, that would be helpful.
Okay.
So do I have a second, and then we'll have the public?
Sure, second.
Okay. So we have a second. And at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on the ordinance regarding Jake brakes in LaPorte County. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak to this at this time? Second call, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this ordinance at this time? Please come up.
Oh, boy.
Jody Slavell, 2402 North State Road, 39, Fort Indiana. Just going to talk about the Jake Brake. One of the locations, it'd be a good idea to put a sign up, be 39 North just before Seaver's Road. That's where I, that's where I am. Truck traffic going into town comes up there, and they just love to rattle the windows, love to rattle the place. I know this same Jake Brake thing came up a few years ago, and you had a lot of opposition. I'm not sure that the public really knows, because I'm sure there'd be a lot of trucking companies standing in here explaining to you that modern truck Jake brakes don't make noise when they use them. The ones that rattle the windows are the ones that have been modified with straight pipes, the older Peterbilt, these kind of things, that they enjoy doing this kind of thing. They, they, they love to come in and just stir up the neighborhood. So my only, my only suggestion is that you look at 39 North just before Seaver's Road there. That's a real problem spot. It drops down to 45 coming up there, and they start hitting the Jake clear back by the bridge all the way up through there. So that's my comment.
Thank you for suggesting. Yeah, when we had this conversation before, one of the truckers said that they was complaining about not being able to use the Jake brakes on a road where the speed limit was 35. I said, sir, if you're doing a speed limit, what the hell you need Jake brakes for? You know? They're, they're, they're on the same. I know my brother was a trucker for 35 years, and he's as obnoxious as they come, and he would love to do stuff like that. So thank you for your comments.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public in regards to our public hearing? Yes, sir.
My name's Mark Sherrick. I live at 0442 East US 20. That is a quarter mile west of Thale Road, just by the subdivisions. I have a building on the south side of 20 that I do mechanical repair out of. That building is 60 foot from the white line on Highway 20. I would like to see that Jake Brake ordinance passed, and I'd like to see it all the way along 20 from 39 down. Because I'm telling you, when they come past my place and they hit them Jake brakes, it's loud. I mean, it echoes in the building, and it, it's loud. I can't even hear people talking on the phone. But I don't understand why they use the Jake Brake. I've been a technician my whole life, and the Jake Brake is made for on the hills, out in the mountains and that. I have a Jake Brake on my one time. They don't need the Jake Brake. They're going too fast. I mean, I sit out there someday, and I see people going by 70, 80 mile an hour. It's ridiculous. But truck traffic has gotten so bad. I've lived there for 34 years, and I've never seen the truck traffic so bad. I know a lot of them don't run the toll road anymore, so they run 20.
Yeah.
But I was, I was really pleased when I seen the county had added a DOT officer out there, and they had been pulling some of them over, but I haven't seen them out there lately. But, yeah, I would, the Jake brakes are ridiculous. I'd really appreciate it if I seen a sign all the way down through there, because it is 45 there in front of my place. And when they come down through there, they hit that. It's annoying.
Yeah, I'll bet. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second to support the Jake Brake ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. The ordinance has passed. Next on the agenda, consider approving the contract for the salary study to be performed by Wagner, Irwin, and Sheel, contingent on appropriation by the county council. I believe Human Resources is on the line.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. I don't know if you had anything to, to share in regards to this request.
No, actually, we did meet with Mark Iglesky and Earl and I, and we met with Eddie from the Wagner, Irwin, and Sheely, and only thing was the language change to not exceed $20,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the contract.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve the contract for the salary study, contingent on appropriation by the county council. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank, thank you, Monique. Consider bid recommendation for new vehicles from Sheriff Boyd.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
As you recall, we came before the board back in April and asked permission to seek bids for 12 new police vehicles. We received the bids. They were opened at the last commission meeting. We've had an opportunity to review the bids, which was actually just one bid from LaPorte Chrysler. And only one of the vehicles that was bid actually meets our specifications. The others do not. That is the sport utility vehicles. And I can talk about that in a moment. But at this point, we are making a recommendation to accept the bid from LaPorte Chrysler for the purchase of a 2022 Dodge Charger vehicle. Then we would ask permission to approach the council for funding for that.
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion and a second to support approaching the council for new vehicles by Sheriff Boyd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that the other vehicles that did not meet the specifications, unfortunately, to Ford and Chevrolet that also make sport utility vehicles that could potentially meet our needs, we understand that they won't go into production for the sport utility vehicles until early to late fall. So what we'll do is we'll rebid those once we understand that they're going to take orders for that, and we'll reapproach the commission, ask permission to seek bids, and we'll repeat the process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. And please tell your, tell all your staff, your deputies, all the, all your employees there at the sheriff's office, thank you for your hard work, and happy National Peace Officers Week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have considered recommendation for MS4 Director's Position. Ms. Thomas, you're also on for this item. While she's logging in, I'll, I'll just make a few comments. The MS4 Director's Position is a position post-retirement of a previous MS4 staff person. The state redesigned the program, and so it has lots more teeth in it than it did previously, lots more requirements, and certainly it is a much more robust management position. So we've been working with the council to, to kind of appropriate the changes and redesign the department. So, Monique, if you could explain the process we went through for this, this position and who was involved, et cetera? Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. We had four candidates that we, that did apply. One of the candidates accepted another job offer, and we had three applicants. One was internal, and the other were, the other two were external. We went through an application process with all of the candidates, and each one of them was interviewed, interviewed individually. And the one that we found out, well, that was most qualified and who we all suggest, we all, me, Reggie, Councilman Novak, Commissioner Mateus, we all were involved in the process. And Nicole Messicar was our decision that we came in agreement who best fit, was the best fit for the position.
Thank you. So at this time, I would consider a recommendation for the MS4 Director Position to affirm the recommendation of the Hiring Committee to offer the position to Nicole Messicar, who is currently with Soil and Water and has a, has a really terrific background. And then I, after we make this, I would suggest, maybe Reggie, you can come up and just advise the, the commission on why this position is so critical.
I approve, make a motion to approve the recommendations of the committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation for, of the Hiring Committee to hire Nicole Messicar for the MS4 Director Position. The position will begin on June 1st, 2022. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So Reggie has been a consultant to the county in regards to the redesign of the MS4 Department due to the changes at the state level. Reggie, if you could just give us sort of a, an encapsulated view of what we've done thus far, and then what you're seeing as sort of our, our, our plan for the next six months.
Certainly. My name is Reggie Corthaus. I am a water quality specialist, environmental law specialist, and right now I work for Butler Fairman and Seifert. But for 12 years, I was the MS4 Stormwater Program Director for ITIM, and prior to that, the Environmental Director at NERC-C here in Northwest Indiana. One of the issues that arose was the fact that the stormwater program was not being properly implemented. And so now, as we looked at a new permit being issued by the state of Indiana, Indiana went from permit by rule to a general administrative permit, which basically meant that no longer there would be, no longer there would be a rule board and a state legislature that would oversee what the permit is. It's done by ITIM. And because of that process, it allowed LaPorte County to take a look at the program and see where they needed to, to make some changes. And having an MS4 Coordinator or Director will eliminate or help to eliminate a number of the problems that were brought before you tonight. There's got to be coordination on water quality, water quality runoff, stormwater management within the county, if the county's going to grow and develop the way it seems to be doing. So hopefully, we'll move in that direction, a better coordination between the county zoning, county commissioner, not commissioners, but the county different boards that all have something to do with it. And you'll have a stormwater person there that'll be able to, to advise on this. Looking at some of the issues tonight could really be eliminated. So you're on, you're on the right track, and you chose the right person, I think.
Thank you. At this time, we have already approved the motion, so we would like to congratulate Nicole on her, on her great new job.
Congratulations.
As you can see from tonight's meeting, June 1st is not coming fast enough. Thank you. And thank you, Monique, for guiding us through that. Next on the agenda, consider opening bids for the E911 project updates for councils, furniture, and carpets, Director Houston. And Assistant Director Deckard. Good evening.
Maybe it's just multiple copies, that's what it is. I think it's multiple copies. We've received, I believe, one response. I think this is probably multiple copies of the, of the bid package in response to the request for proposals that the department did. Pricing for this particular bidder, X, X-Bix Systems, Littleton, Colorado, on the, I believe it was councils and various other electronics.
Council flooring and everything. It's Cybex.
They've tendered a price of $411,159.90 for total cost, including specified materials for the 10 workstations, plus detailed unit price, includes materials, freight, installation, labor, and tax, $411,159.90. And I think it's just multiple copies of the, of the bid pack. I would ask the commission to show the proposal of X-Bix?
Cybex.
Cybex. Systems Incorporated of Littleton, Colorado, receive the bid and refer these to the department head and the assistant department head for review and recommendation.
I move to accept the bid as, or accept the receiving of the bid, timely received.
Do you want my Ali's page?
Second. One in the office. Okay.
We have a motion and a second to accept the bid openings and refer them to the 911 Department.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda, consider the 2022 contract between the LaPort County Agricultural Association, County Fair, and LaPort County Sheriff's Department to provide special deputies during Fair Week. Sheriff Boyd.
Good evening again. This is the same contract that we've operated with the Fair Association, also known as the Fair Board, for as long as I can remember. It's been given to the county attorney for review. The only thing that's changed on it are the dates and the times.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second to approve the, the sheriff's work at the county fair during Fair Week. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And next on the agenda, we have, thank you, Sheriff. Next on the agenda, we have consider the 2022 contract between the LaPort County Agricultural Association slash County Fair and LaPort County EMS to provide special detail during Fair Week. Similar.
Yep. This is the revised 2022 EMS Fair contract for us to provide EMS coverage for the first aid station out there and also all the special events that are held out there. Same thing. It's the same contract, just revise the dates and times and make it correspond with the events of 2022.
Been reviewed by council?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second to support the 2022 contract for County EMS and the LaPort County Agricultural Association. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Don't go away, Andrew. Motion is carried. Next on the agenda, consider authorization for EMS to participate in a national purchasing cooperative to assist in ambulance procurement.
So over the past year or so, I'm sure you've heard me talk about the growing build time, lead time of our ambulance manufacturers. So this is no different from what other areas of manufacturing are facing, including cars, SUVs, dump trucks that the county highway uses. We're all facing the same issue. And to add to it, it's a kind of a feeding frenzy with EMS agencies, constantly placing orders for ambulances that they won't see for probably two or three years. So as of right now, which that then in turn increases the build time, lead time even more. So as of right now, all of 2023 is booked solid. They're not accepting any more orders. 2024 is, is booked, and also part of 2025 is already full. So if we place an order right now for an ambulance, we won't see it until probably mid or late 2025. It's hard to manage your fleet, you know, when you're facing build times like that. So currently I have an ambulance on order for late 2022, mid '23, but I have nothing for '24 because '24 filled up so quickly, I didn't act fast enough to get an order placed. Kind of the purpose of this purchasing cooperative. So, and, and I'm sure you realize that it's pretty critical for the, for the health of our fleet to replace these ambulances at specific intervals. An ambulance isn't something you want to kind of limp along and hopefully it makes it through a year, you know, duct tape and bubble gum, and hopefully it works. We, we don't want to take that approach. We, they have to be reliable and good working order. People's lives depend on these ambulances. So that's kind of the, the concern that I have is making sure that our fleet stays healthy and continues to stay healthy. And here we are trying to pre-plan three, four, maybe even five years down the road to, to keep this going properly. So that brings me to the national purchasing cooperative. So I started looking at different ways to mitigate this problem and, on how to manage our fleet, and it was suggested to look into this cooperative. So both Michigan City Fire and LaPort City Fire have both been using a cooperative for many years now with no issues at all. In fact, I talked to Chief Snyder from LaPort City Fire, and I asked him to give me all the pros and cons of using a cooperative. He didn't have a single negative thing to say about his experience using this with purchasing fire apparatus. So just some general information about a national purchasing cooperative. It streamlines the purchasing process for schools, municipalities, and other public entities across the nation. Contracts and vendors awarded have been competitively procured to assist members with compliance with local and state procurement requirements and a documented audit trail. Transparency in the procurement process is treated with high, with a high degree of focus and is of paramount importance. All vendors are treated on equal terms and are on the same plane of competition. Because a competitive procurement process has been completed by the cooperative, members may save time and resources that would have been spent on preparing and conducting a formal RFP. So besides reducing administrative costs, members achieve additional savings through competitive pricing. So basically, the, the two main objectives that, that I'm trying to accomplish is it streamlines the bid process, saving us valuable time. It also lets us, gives us an avenue to advertise our bids nationally instead of just locally, to get more competitive bidding and hopefully drive the, the price down. Because right now, ambulance prices, all vehicle prices are skyrocketing. So with that being said, I'm asking your permission to move forward with being able to accept and use a bid price from a national purchasing cooperative. And I have spoke to Attorney Friedman about this previously. I'm not sure if you'd want to chime in on any of that.
Sure. Andrew had asked us to look at this. The statutes, just like the special purchase statute, provides an exception to competitive bid. The use of a national bid cooperative also provides one of the enumerated exceptions in statute. And when extra value is there, the bid cooperatives are a useful way to be able to do that, and we're recommending approval of this. Motion to approve the request.
I would second. And as, as Director McGuire and I spoke about this before, when talking about the pros and cons, it's, your words were, it's all pros and no cons.
Yes.
Yeah.
We have a motion as second to support the authorization for EMS to participate in a national purchasing cooperative. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Andrew.
Andrew, please, on behalf of all of us, thank your staff and, you know, all your EMTs, paramedics, and obviously your support staff for happy National EMS Week. I don't, this week, this year is a little weird that both overlap, and part of that is because the 15th is National Remembrance Day for fallen law enforcement officers. I think that's why you guys overlap this year, but.
Yeah, well, thank you very much.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider memorandum of understanding between Franciscan Beacon Hospital and LaPort County for mutual aid in the event of an emergency.
Yes, we've reviewed this. It's consistent with the similar agreements that have been set up between counties, governmental entities, and other hospitals, and so we're recommending approval of it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second to approve the memorandum of understanding regarding mutual aid between Franciscan Beacon Hospital and LaPort County. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Consider foster care agreement for the Jane Bernard Animal Adoption Center. Is there anyone to speak?
Derek on there? Eric's not on.
I am not certain.
Yes, Laura Nierenberg of my office, who works with the animal shelter and various issues, has reviewed this, is comfortable with the process, and is recommending approval. It's a, it's a win-win again on.
Yeah, discussed it with Eric. Yeah, and it sounds like something, like you said, a win-win. I would make a motion to approve that.
Second.
We have a motion as second to approve the foster care agreement for the Jane Bernard Animal Adoption Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. It's a busy time. They're out at the shelter, so anything we can do to help them place animals in safe places is great. Consider LaPort County Historical Society Board of Directors' recommendation for interim museum director.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Sorry, we have a motion to approve, sorry.
No.
We have a second.
I, I actually didn't see in my packet or anywhere else here who the, who the, who that person is. I don't, I don't think anything was.
Assistant now, or she's the assistant in, in the departure of the director. She would move up. She's been there for a few years, very sharp. I just attended a meeting out there just the other night. Her name is Danielle Adams.
Okay, thank you. Second.
She would serve as, as an interim while the hiring.
While they posted job opening.
Second.
We have a motion as second to support the Historical Society's Board of Directors' recommendation to move the current assistant director into the interim museum director while the job is posted. And I do believe it has been posted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you so much. Next, we have Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Haney.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to wish my wife a very happy anniversary. Yesterday, we celebrated our 21st wedding anniversary.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's been, again, another busy couple of weeks. Attended a very moving law enforcement memorial service for the start of National Peace Officer Week. Numerous other elected officials were there, including Commissioner Mateus. It was very moving up in Michigan City. This week, as I mentioned earlier, is also our National EMS Appreciation Week. Touched on earlier in the meeting, when Mr. Stevens pointed out our South County Coalition meeting that occurred down at LaCrosse Town Hall. I'm glad to see we're moving forward with that. You know, there's a, that's a very pressing issue to our residents down in Prairie Township, and hopefully IDEM will, will be granting us that hearing for, for the crushing down there. Also, at the fairgrounds this past weekend, we had a very successful seven and one recycling collection that occurred out there. And let's see. And we also had a number of other meetings this week, including a great meeting with Commissioner Mateus and a bunch of folks in the community and the Parks Department and community leaders in regards to a new trail project down in South County. I hope, I hope happens, happens as well. There's a pretty, pretty exciting opportunity down there for that. Hopefully, we can make that happen and get some good grants for that. I want to close this evening by giving, giving you some thoughts from Mark Twain, going back just a little bit here. He says, "Each of you, for himself or herself, by himself or herself, and on his, his or her own responsibility, must speak. It is a solemn and weighty responsibility, and not lightly to be flung aside at the bullying of pulpit, press, government, or politician. Each must decide for himself or herself alone what is right and what is wrong, which course is patriotic and which isn't. You cannot chirp this and be a man. To decide it against your convictions is to be an unqualified and inexcusable traitor. It is traitorous both against yourself and your country. Let men label you as they may. If you alone of all the nation decide one way, and that way be the right way, by your conviction of the right, you have done your duty by yourself and by your country. Hold up your head, for you have nothing to be ashamed of. It doesn't matter what the press says. It doesn't matter what the politicians or the mobs say. It doesn't matter if the whole country decides that something is wrong, if, if something is right. Republics are founded on one principle above all else, the requirement that we stand up for what we believe in, no matter the odds or the consequences. When the mob and the press and the whole world tell you to move, your job is to plant yourself like a tree beside the River of Truth and tell the whole world, no, you move." And that was from Mark Twain. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosinski.
As we reported on the last meeting, we had the, finally, after 15 years, well, actually more than that, 15 that I've been about years, we broke the ground on the new EMS station. I went by there this morning, and it's amazing. It's amazing what's going on out there. Big project, lots of moving parts, lots of people going to work on that EMS station. And I got a lot of comments this morning. The breakfast out at Jenny Ray's from people said, "Thank God, finally. We, we needed that for so long." The sewer project on 421 going to Loves, moving right along. We've had a few hiccups. We had many hiccups, but that, that project is finally moving along. That's going to be a big, big thing for the county. We have a meeting next Thursday about code enforcement, which is something I've also worked on for a really long time. Been a lot of bumpy roads, but, but Mike Poland's doing a really, really good job on getting this thing. Took advice from our attorney, which is, don't reinvent the wheel. Go to some other county, see what they're doing, adopt what they're doing. And I think we're going to see the code enforcement really come into their own to take care of some of the ISRs in the county. You know, who wants to move to a county where you've got fallen-down buildings, junk rusted cars in the yard, blue tarps over the roof for a couple of years? We're going to take care of this stuff. Last Thursday, I went to the meeting of the Northwest Indiana Forum, and the presentation was on the South Shore Double Track. Really great presentation by Mike Nolan. And they are, like he said, this is not any longer a dream, or what are we going to do? They are working on it. We saw a little video of the actual construction going on in the Michigan City area. It's going to be a game changer when people can live in Michigan City, live in Indiana, get to Chicago in an hour to, where they can go to work and then get the heck out of there where the taxes are high and you got a really good chance of getting killed. So it's a big thing for Northern Indiana. Also, last Friday, I attended a meeting of the LaPort Economic Advancement Partnership, which we call LEAP. Want to congratulate Bert Cook on the new, the new project going on on South Vale Road, TubeCraft is their name. Going to have 15 employees at $25 an hour. It's a two and a half million dollar investment in the building and another million dollars in equipment. Big thing. It's a big thing for LaPort. We continue to move forward. The big discussion at the LEAP meeting was about the fraud ordinance. Lots of people, business owners, the, the, the labor unions, the mayor himself, everybody applauding the efforts of two of the commissioners that, that passed that fraud ordinance. We don't like fraud. We're up against it. It was pretty simple, either for fraud or you're against fraud. They were very happy that this happened. They were also very concerned about the latest, what you want to call it there, in the auditor's office. It cost the city of LaPort $50 million in assessed value and a $34, $34 million loss. That's a quarter of a million dollar loss in revenue from the latest, the latest tax thing in, in the auditor's office. A lot of discussion about that. And speaking of that, those two items alone, the latest hiccup, we'll call it, in the auditor's office and the fraud ordinance, I, when I attended the meeting at, in Portage for Northwest Indiana Forum, and also the meeting with the local meeting here for LEAP, found out that LaPort County is the subject of discussion at these places. So not only do I hear from our Representative Pressel and Senator Bohacik, that we're the discussion, we're the focal point of discussion at the state level, at the regional level, and at the local level about what the heck's going on in LaPort. Why are we having this kind of stuff going on? What? It doesn't hurt the county. It doesn't hurt individually. It hurts the county. It hurts the whole area. We got, we are working hard with the department, with LEAP and with the economic development here in the county to bring business to the county. And when people see the kind of foolishness going on, they, they kind of hesitate, saying, "Do I really want to go there? Do I want to get involved in what's going on here with all of this, the screw-ups and, and the negativity?" A lot of them don't. And it, it, it hurts us. It hurts us bad. For all the hard work we do, it just, it hurts us. We don't need that. On a very positive note, LaPort County Fair, July 9th to the 16th, the 176 Fair. And I, I found a little quote myself. It was actually a tip of the day at one of the big commissioner meetings in Indianapolis. You'll like this. "It may be true that no county commissioner is a prophet in his own land. However, being a martyr remains a possibility."
Thank you. Thank you, sir. You know, I, I want to start with the concern that you just mentioned, because it's, it's been weighing on my mind. I travel around the region quite a bit, and LaPort County is on, is on everybody's radar, and it's not in a good way. You know, I've been involved in economic development for a long time. And when a company is looking at a community, they often hire consultants to do a profile on a community, and that consultant hits the web, and they pull up articles. I see Mike Sights nodding his head. I see April nodding. When you're looking for a place to locate your business, you're looking for a place that is positive, wholesome, low tax rate, hardworking people, all that. We have a lot of those elements, but what we don't want to talk about, what we don't want to be known for, is being a. to be known for is being a place where there's corruption and there's negativity and businesses aren't going to, they're not going to select us. So, we're looking for places to, to build our, the fabric of our community. We're looking for companies that will dig their roots in here so that our children and our grandchildren have jobs and careers and contemporary professions that are here. People want to live in a place that is a wholesome place, a place with good people. When I go to Portage, for example, to the NERPC meetings where I'm a service commissioner, and I'm talking about our broadband effort and I'm being asked a lot about our broadband effort and the work that we're doing, and they're asking me, "What's happening in Lepore County?" All we read about is all this corruption. What is it, is that, is that what's going on there? I actually had someone from Lake County say, "You know what? We're so glad you're, you all are not focusing on corruption in Lake County because we're kind of known for that." It seems that Lepore County is taking, taking that. And I wasn't really proud. That's not what we're about. We are a group of communities of faith-based people. We value our families, our education, our land, our lakes. We're about 4H and FFA and National Honor Society. I, I am at wits' end trying to think, how do we turn, turn around and focus on the many families and people who dedicate their lives to taking care of other people, nurses and, and healthcare providers, teachers. Those, that's the fabric of our community. That's what we should be talking about. So, I share your concern, but I hear it on my own. The people are, they're alarmed at the change in the tenor of Lepore County. We are not a stagnant community, as has been said previously. We're a community on the move, but we have to believe in ourselves and we have to express that positivity because that's what we're about. That's the culture of our community. So, I won't go too far on that, on that bandwagon, but I want to tell you what's been on my mind. So, I mentioned that I have, I serve on the NERPC Board of Commissioners and I'm on the executive committee this year. I did present some, an update when we received the broadband grants, the next level grants. And after the meeting, I had a lot of other communities come up to us and say, "How are you, how did you do some of this? Give us your tips. You're so far ahead of us." So, that was, that was, you know, we learned from other communities. We went and studied best practices around, not just Indiana, but around the Midwest and other states that are similar composition to ours, so that we could learn from them. No, no need to reinvent something, but find out what they're, what they did, what their mistakes were and what their successes were. And that has helped us. My fellow commissioners have mentioned a lot of the meetings and things that we've done. So, I won't go through all the meetings I've been to because they've been mentioned. But I will say that we are going to be meeting with, the Broadband Task Force met last week. And we are, we had a great presentation from Michigan City Area Schools and a group of technical experts that they have hired to help them with their broadband access issues for their students and families. And I'm going to be going to meet with them to review their plans and see if there's any way that the county can access that technology to help us reach some of the very hard-to-reach places across our county. You know, we're blessed with wonderful geography, but we're also, that's a challenge. I won't say it's a curse. It's a challenge because we are so large that it's really hard to get fibers, the gold standard. It's really hard to get fiber everywhere, but there are other technologies that have advanced in the last five years that may help us make sure that everyone, every man, woman, child, small business, you know, independent contractor, anyone who needs internet, including some of our larger corporations who've complained that they don't have, they have access, but they don't have enough access. So, they can't, you know, load, download AutoCAD and they can't export some of their really large files. So, we need to solve those problems and we're working on that. I do want to give a Lepore County Works report. We talk a lot about jobs and businesses and we want to honor the businesses that are here that have dug their roots in, while we also help them by acknowledging that they, many of them need employees. So, this, this week, we're going to, in our Lepore County Works program, we're going to report out on Alexandra Molding. I know most of us have passed them on the highway many times and wondered, "What do they do in there?" So, Alexandra Molding Company is the lead molding manufacturer and distributor of wood and wood composite moldings, largest in North America, and they have international trade. They sit at 4747 West State Road 2, as we all know. They've been in operation for 72 years, not here in Lepore County, but across the country. It's privately owned and operated by a third-generation family. It has manufacturing facilities on both the east and the west coast that provide their finger joint moldings. And there's lots of details about what type of wood they use. They have a wide array of wood that they use. The company has five domestic mega centers that control manufacturing and distribution. Alexandria East is in Alexandria, Ontario in Canada. Alexandra West is in Moxie, Washington, the state of Washington. Alexandria Midwest, American Midwest Distribution, is in Lepore, Indiana. So, Royal Wood is in Bedford, Ontario. And Alexandra Northeast is in Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. So, we are on the map for this company because we handle all their Midwest distribution. And that's one of the things that's really special about our location because we are so, we're, you know, they say Indiana's the crossroads. Well, we literally are the crossroads because all of our highway, highways link right into Lepore County. It was established in Lepore in April 2005. So, they dug their roots in deep for over 20 years. It was locally known as the House of Farrah before it was purchased by Alexandra Molding. Alexandra Midwest serves the Midwest market of Illinois, Indiana, Wisconsin, Minnesota, Michigan and northern Missouri. They currently employ 173 people with an average wage of $18 per hour. They offer full benefits, medical, dental, vision and life insurance. And they're, they're asking that if you want to work in a family-oriented business that is both rewarding and challenging and that their employees have fun at work, you can submit your resume online. There, this will be posted on the Lepore County website under the Lepore County Works program. And you can go online and apply for the jobs at their, at their company. We also have lots of other companies that we've highlighted, from Sims Me to Peepers Eyeglass Store and everything in between. Garwood Orchards is looking for seasonal help. So, there's lots of work in Lepore County for anyone who would like a job, a better job or a new job. So, with that, thank you very much for your patience. Some of you have been here for the entire time. And I thank you for being here and have a good evening. Meeting is adjourned.